Meeting on our ISD Board of Trustees called order. There is the presence of quorum and the meeting is going to be called, as most of the time the manner required. First order of business, second order of business is now the continuous improvement section of public hearing on TAPER to include public comments and then a discussion.
Texas Academic Performance Report matches the acronym's name. Struggle with that the last one. TAPER replaced the old AEIS report as y'all are aware. So today, by requirement, by law, we are having a presentation to the public, presentation to the board, and then a public comment period. So at this time, I'll ask Dr. Hanson and Mr. Sanchez to take us through the actual presentation. Dr. Hanson is Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. Mr. Sanchez is the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. While we're all accountable and responsible for the academic performance of our district, these two right here shoulder a lot of the responsibility in that accountability through curriculum instruction and the school side of the org chart. Dr. Hanson, Mr. Sanchez.
So, thank you, Dr. Harper and board. Just a reminder that the TAPER report includes a lot of different elements. It includes not only performance elements such as STAR and EOC, but it talks to us about attendance, dropout rates, graduation rates, the types of diplomas that we're graduating kids with, advanced courses such as dual credit and AP, scores on SAT, ACT, and other student information and staff information. So it kind of gives us a lot of different information.
So what we want to do is be able to take an overview of what our district looks like, and we'll start with the student demographics. And as you can see there, our largest population is going to be our Hispanic population of 46 percent with African American 28 percent. Those two combined make up 74 percent of our student population. And that's going to be important to keep in mind as we go through the rest of the TAPER report because we know historically, those are the two subgroups that lag behind our white population, if you will, in academic performance. So the next page, we'll look at the student information. With the student body, we're at, last year, this year, we were 73 percent economically disadvantaged and 65 percent were students at risk. And so this year, I think we're as high as 75 percent, 78 percent economically disadvantaged.
Let's pause on that real quick. You know, there's some very back and forth on some of the factors of why some of those economic disadvantaged numbers are where they are. Y'all know that they take in the free and reduced lunch numbers that we have in our school system. Pretty reliant upon whether or not those parents and students actually turn that data in. Some years, our collections are really good. Some years, they're not so good. We also throw in some other barriers and challenges to that, and that would be more conservative families don't want folks to know what their financial situations are. At the same time, they also, the feds also ask for the CEP, is it the fed or the state?
The fed.
The feds do the Community Education Program. I can't remember what the acronym stands for. CEP schools, where if you have a certain number of economic disadvantaged, they would not require you to actually go get that data. And so we do a good job, I think, of actually trying to go ahead and do something that, locally, and making sure that we're accurate on our economic disadvantaged numbers because it does matter in the accountability system. Again, if we were just to rely upon those 10 schools or so that are CEP schools to not go and actually get the actual data, the local data on what economic disadvantage looks like, it could knock our district down on economic disadvantage down to anywhere close to 60 percent. And therefore, that sliding scale in the accountability system would be, would not be accurate, an accurate depiction of what our student body looks like. So 73 percent last year, Mr. Sanchez estimates 78 percent this year. And of course, that's, a lot of that has to do with our capture rates, that as well. The economy also influences this as well. So just depending on how good the economy is, locally, nationally, the state, and individual households, does also matter in the economic disadvantage.
So let me just tie to that, if y'all remember that as schools get distinctions, the economically disadvantaged number is tied to what campuses they're tied to and who they're compared against. And so our principals have done a really, really good job in the last couple of years of calling parents, making sure that they're giving them free and reduced lunch applications in. Multiple calls go out. And so it's a big, right, Tosh? It is a big effort, huge effort from our campuses to make sure that, make sure that our campuses are getting the free and reduced lunch so that we can truly compare ourselves up against other districts in other campuses that are dealing with the same hurdles and struggles that we are. And so that's important to keep in mind as we continue to go through the reporting.
And celebrate the same accomplishments.
And celebrate the achievements.
Yes.
You know, when we're winning, not if we're winning, but when we're winning. Okay?
So of those students that we, that we're looking at, of 100 percent of our students, there are about 10 percent of them that are identified as gifted and talented from second grade all the way through 12th grade.
That's total?
Yes, sir.
Okay, not just economically disadvantaged?
Right, of all the students in our district, the 18,000 plus that were reported on the TAPER last year.
Okay. And you said up to 12th grade, so what does a gifted and talented high school student look like?
Usually those services are met during the pre-AP, AP courses. So when we have a student who is gifted and talented and they are in the high school, we typically meet their services in AP, dual credit, or pre-AP courses.
If you're identified as GT, at any point in time, do you kind of stay identified as?
You stay identified unless you no longer want to participate in services.
Right.
So at the high school level, if we have students who are identified as gifted and talented and they do not want to take advanced courses, then we ask, then we ask them to choose not to be in those services because that is how we provide services for our gifted and talented.
We give them a document.
Right. We need to document that.
So just as a parent who's had four kids run through that high school recently, I don't know that I've ever heard the word gifted and talented at high school. As a parent, I always thought of that as kind of an elementary thing where there's targeted special programming. And then into middle school, there were some classes, but even that, the language shifts to pre-AP.
It does. And some of it happens organically. So if we have students that are gifted and talented, you know, the way that we advise them towards coursework is different. And if we have a student who's GT and they do not want to take any courses, they'll have individual conversations with counselors and parents about helping improve the rigor of their course selection. And so it could be that just organically, your kids, you know, that word GT went into those coursework and it kind of happened.
That and the secondary coursework, 1612, is a little more defined about, from the advanced.
On level, yes.
From the advanced end. You know, you look at pre-AP five, whenever we started identifying them as gifted and talented, if you were just to run a regular program, there'd been nothing specialized for them if we didn't identify those kids as GT. So GT is almost a, I don't know, for lack of a better term, pre-AP in the elementary years, although that's not what it is. It's just, you're right in saying that, and then it kind of transfers over into just the advanced coursework for GT students.
Are we still pulling students out, sending them to, it's a garing?
To garing. We do for some of the campuses, and we have some campuses that are piloting an on-campus pull-out program this year. So they are, the students are staying on campus, a GT teacher is going to that campus, pulling the students out, and then also pushing in and integrating in the classroom to provide GT services. So we're piloting that with three or four campuses, elementary campuses this year.
G, Birdwell's one of those.
Birdwell.
Oh, really?
Right.
Caldwell.
Caldwell. Can't remember which one. And for the CTE 30 percent, those are students who are in a coherent sequence. So 30 percent, that's not students who have taken one CTE course. Those are students who are considered in a coherent sequence headed towards an endorsement or an industry certification or something of that nature.
Will a third year of a course be considered the coherent?
A coherent.
Not the two-year?
Right, a third year.
A third year, okay. And so this is 30 percent of CTE eligible students, so like a third grader can't be coherent.
Right. Yes, sir. It would be, I mean, it would be not through 12th, but if it was just not grade, they wouldn't be in a coherent sequence already unless they had taken an eighth grade course to get a. So yeah, typically, you're talking about juniors and seniors. We have 22 percent of our students who are bilingual ESL, and if you look down two categories, you'll see that 23 percent of our students are English learners. The 1 percent difference are parents or families who deny services. So they're considered English language learners because of different languages spoken at home, but the parents, for whatever reason, have denied bilingual ESL services. And so that's the difference in that. And then students with disabilities, we have about 7 percent of our students.
And that's trending upward?
Mm-hmm.
Not spiking, it's trending. So I think because of the phantom cap that was out there, it wasn't really a phantom cap, there were some pretty hardcore penalties that were imposed by regulatory agencies under prior administrations, special ed numbers will go up because they have alleviated that because of the federal ruling that said that we were unconstitutionally, not we are, excuse me, Texas schools were unconstitutionally capping the number for special ed. And so in the old days, if you got above a certain number, let's say 10 percent, TEA would write you a nasty letter and maybe put some nasty sanctions on you. Would come do some nice pleasant visits, make you do a lot of extra reporting, some more phone calls, and a lot of those other types of things. So there was a cap. It wasn't written anywhere, but those things were happening. And I think the commissioner and his agency now are not, they're not doing that to us anymore. So there's been a coat of arms of blaming who at the back of the day, and we all know who it was because we weren't imposing that on ourselves, I'll tell you that.
I will say that Tyler ISD is one of the largest districts that has comprehensive special ed services, and so it is not unusual for families to move into Tyler ISD from neighboring towns, cities, and districts in order to, you know, be afforded the services that we provide. And so our early childhood PTCD services are just off the roof. I think in October, we had 150 to 200 outstanding assessments that needed to be done, and of those, it looked like those were, you know, those were students that had a good chance of qualifying. And we do get a lot of students from neighboring districts that move to Tyler because we just have really good services.
Most smaller school systems co-op with other districts to form a larger scale, to combine those services, and still, when they do that, they can't offer what we have. Not to mention the fact, we have a pretty good flavor across the economies of Tyler ISD where we have elements of rural, suburban, mid-urban, and urban pockets in our school system. So you can, if you need those services, you can find a place to live in Tyler ISD. Commit the board for doing well, supporting us, we run a pretty good special ed program.
On the English language learner front, with some of the big economic development projects here in town, there's been some talk about significant changes in demographics in terms of languages that kids show up speaking. Are we still overwhelmingly Spanish? Are we beginning to see other languages trickle in that are challenging?
Almost very, very few. We may have students from other countries, but most of them are Spanish-speaking. We have very, very few English language learners that are.
Asian or.
No, sir.
Yeah, and you know, a handful of kids that are adopted, maybe from an African nation. We may have a few of those.
A few.
But nothing compared to what the big urbaners are experiencing with 40 languages they have. I think when we worked at Hillcrest, I think we had 60 different languages spoken there. And so that kind of enhances the development. We had kids from Serbia and Bosnia. It was crazy.
Of our English language learners, less than 8 percent of them are newcomers.
Earlier, you said that for whatever reason, some people, you know, deny the ESL distinction, I guess. Is that something that you actively, they actively have to do? Or do we identify them as, you know, same language, and the parents say, no? I mean, so that's, it's not like an opt-out, I mean, it is an opt-out type thing.
So the process is, is when students come in to enroll, the parents go on a language survey. Every parent does that when you enroll in a district. And if they put on there that anything besides English is spoken in the home, then that automatically means that there's a process that then needs to happen. And so we test student, we test the student and various other steps that we go through. The parents still can opt to have the student not participate in bilingual ESL program. And most of the reasons for that, overwhelmingly the reason, is because they want their student to stay in their neighborhood school. And in our district, we don't have bilingual ESL at every single campus. So that's usually the reason they want their student to stay at whatever their neighborhood school is that may not offer it. So Owens is an example. We don't have bilingual ESL at Owens, but if a family comes and they still qualify, they have the option to say, no, I really want my student to stay here. That's usually the reason. And/or if they've been accepted into, for example, a magnet program that maybe doesn't offer that service.
Okay. So the next slide is probably the slide that keeps Mr. Jones and the HR department up at night. As we look at our teachers' years of experience, 10 percent of them are beginning teachers, 33 percent are one to five. And so if you look at that, 43 percent of our teachers are one to five years' teaching experience. And that's a pretty good chunk. And then after that, we have 19 percent. So if you do the math on that, that's 62 percent of our teachers are one to 10 years. And then 11 years and up is 40, I mean, it's 38 percent. And so we've got to figure out a way, Mr. Jones understands, and we understand this, we've got to figure out a way to keep teachers in the teaching profession. And I know Dr. Crawford and Dr. Hanson, Mr. Jones went to UT Tyler the other day. I'm sure he's going to have his commentary on what's happening with our local university around graduating teachers and keeping them local versus them graduating then maybe at a higher level with higher degrees. So there you go, Mr. Superintendent, a toss to the soft toss.
Well, it's not just our local teacher college, it's all over. You know, there's not enough kids, or excuse me, students in the future teacher pipeline at all of our universities in the state to handle a mass exodus of retirees from the system. We certainly would like our colleges of education to enhance the candidate pools that we all have, not just on quality, but quantity. Quality first is something that I would really suggest, but quantity is an issue. And it's not just a teacher college issue, it's a media issue, it's a legislative issue, it's a political issue. And certainly, understanding what we have here is, the teaching profession has, and education in general, I think some of us wonder why didn't we do some of the things that we do from a day-to-day basis for some reports that are given, and the challenges that we have. We have not made the teaching profession as noble as it once was, and something that we need to consider when we talk about that. Now, we do have things that spice up our school system, it's a little different than others, we're self-funded, which if you have a family, you participate in our insurance program, that's $5,000 to $7,000 or more in your back pocket of take-home as opposed to being on the state's plan. The teacher retirement system in Texas, you cannot find a better pension system in the world. Now, you know, certainly, some of those things are going to be looked at this session, but we certainly hope that our opportunities to hire and keep experienced teachers are enhanced by the legislature, can be enhanced by the school board and this administration. Now, I'll say this, what some folks may see as a challenge, I see as an opportunity. And whenever you're able to do things such as DOI and higher degree professionals to go into the classroom, maybe choosing a second career, or maybe just do not want to go into the, take out another loan to go back to school and get your teacher certification, or go to one of these alternative cert people, places, there's an opportunity there. Alternative certification is another opportunity, the right ones. There's some that are not as quality as others. But at the same time, we're in a new era of education, and I think the new group of teachers that are coming in, we can really mold them. I see those numbers up there as opportunities. If we've been stuck in tradition in a lot of ways, I think people that are brand-new to the profession, that may not have had a lot of the old-school college of ed training like they're still proctoring in some of our colleges of ed, we may have to be opportunistic in being able to really get our teachers effective, the new ones. And then certainly, the ones that are still with us are more than malleable to be able to make, to get them on board with culture. I mean, in fact, I'll say this, if they're still here with us, they're good teachers. And I'm certainly proud to say that, and I'm looking at the opportunities for the incoming groups as well. So I think every school system's experiencing the challenges that we have there, but I think every school system is also looking at opportunities in there to make sure that we have a qualified teaching force put in front of our kids.
So the student achievement data, which you have heard many, many meeting times in many, many board meetings, I'm just going to sort of review it for you very quickly. For the STAR EOC data, you can see that we have increases in district performance scores in reading, math, and science if we look at the district level. And we know that we have two main areas to address, the eighth grade social studies scores, and of course, our fourth and eighth grade writing. Those are issues that we have been working on since June of 2018, or before that, but for sure. And in our other accountability measures here, some of the high points, our high school dropout rate decreased, and it's better than the state and the region, which I know we've talked about publicly. The students who have graduated from high school within four years has increased by a little over 5 percent. 7.3 of the graduates in 2017, and this is lag data, so it's 2017 graduates, had industry certification, which is higher than the region and the state. Our AP scores increased in all subjects in 2017. We had an increase in the number of students who successfully completed dual credit courses, and then the number of students who enrolled in higher education increased as well. So those are all things to celebrate.
And that's a lagging number, too?
Yes, those are all lagging numbers. Anything that has to do with graduation, seniors, it's a lagging number.
The previous page was not lagging.
No, sir. It's, anything that has to do with our graduates, they give us that lagging year because it takes them a while to compile it all. And then our areas to address, our TSI, which just to remind you, that is the college prep test that teachers, that students take if they didn't score well enough on the SAT/ACT. It determines whether they're going to have to take a remedial course in math or reading once they get to college. Those scores need to improve. And I can tell you what we're doing about that if you want to hear that. And then our SAT/ACT scores, they took a slight dip, and so we're really looking at how we're preparing kids for SAT/ACT. So.
On TSI, when I hear kids talking about TSI, it's usually right before they take dual credit classes. So I understand kind of that group of kids, they get TSI tested. The way you described it, it sounds like anyone going to college is taking a TSI, is that?
That's correct. If you do not make a certain score on your SAT or ACT in those specific categories, then, which is a very high score, then you take the TSI to determine what class you're going to start, your what math class, what English, can you go right into English 101, or do you need to take a prep course?
And that's for the, the way you described it and what you're probably, there are two different ways to look at TSI. One's an entrance exam, okay? So kind of a GRE before you go to grad school. If you pass the reading and math, you take that in the back end of your sophomore year if you're planning on taking dual credit courses in junior and senior year. So those.
If you haven't taken the SAT at this point.
That's correct. So you go ahead and take that to see if you're just going to go ahead and be able to take those dual credit courses. So towards the back end, TSI will be proctored again to some of those kids that were not successful here in preparation for them to, when they, once they graduate high school, attend a Texas college or public university. They gotta have TSI. If you're going to UT.
That's right.
If you didn't score high enough on your SAT or ACT, which normally, that usually takes care of itself, you've got to take the TSI. So there's really two windows in there, and you can take it all the way throughout if you're not successful the first time. I know plenty of students who maybe passed the reading the first time, and then maybe have to work on some stuff, and they come back and take the math a few months after. So that's kind of the TSI structure that we have here.
So one of the things we've done in the past is we've left that TSI up to kids to just take as, you know, as they chose, and they took it typically off-campus. And now we're giving the TSI on-campus. We're actually adding, because it also counts towards our accountability in the CCMR, the College Career Readiness, you know. So we are being very intentional about those TSI preps and the TSI scores. Now, a lot of times, when you have more kids taking exam, you're going to get a little dip, right? Because that, so we'll see how that all turns out. And remember, what we're doing this year, we, I won't bring that before you next year, it's going to take another year because the year is, the data lags. So.
We could probably print out some.
Yes, we can.
Local, real-time data, and then get filtered through state.
In addition, with TSI, we started testing our kids on the PSAT earlier in the eighth grade so that they're not in shock when they first get to see the SAT and the ACT and the structure and the setup. Because a lot of the tests, at times, is the structure and the setup which is different than the STAR or the benchmark or the short-cycle assessments. So being able to get our kids and our students to see it earlier helps them so they don't go into some type of culture shock when they see how the test is set up. And so we're doing that as well.
And to dovetail, Mr. Sanchez, in talking about those entrance exams, SAT, ACT, Mr. Brown will be presenting to the board here, I don't know, is it this year? That's the advanced, that's the competitive part of it. But he also, we also have an initiative that we're working on in regard to improvement of ACT and SAT scores. Not only just in the enhancement of giving more kids and identifying more kids that might be national merit eligible, but also improving the opportunities for all of our kids in regard to taking SAT and ACT. And a lot of that's, I hate saying this, is test strategy, not just on just straight-running intelligence, but there are strategies that can boost your score points between one time you take it and the other time you take it, and we're working on that as well. So that's coming pretty quick. I want to give you definitive month that we're working on that, but he's supposed to present that to the board once we finalize our plan.
Every student who takes, in eighth grade, takes the PSAT starting this year, and we're able to disaggregate that data and help, two things, it helps the counselors know how to advise kids towards the most rigorous coursework that they can take, and it also helps us know how to prep kids because it disaggregates the data by content and by standards so that we can help them prepare better for the college entrance or for the PSAT they take in 10th grade.
Yeah. For the district's vision is to reach down further into the elementaries to do, because you can't just create and craft national merit scholars their eighth grade year. It doesn't happen that way. And so you talk about STEM opportunities, the talented and gifted program that we have, and enhancing those opportunities that we have, and adjusting those opportunities that we have, is going to be something that we're going to have to talk about because it's just, it's just not modern enough. just, it's just not modern enough for us to be successful in our day. And so, we've got to modernize our STEM and tag programs, tag, talented and gifted. That's a Dallas thing, that old Dallas thing, too. So, GT, excuse me, earlier, so that we can get them ready because eighth grade's too late.
Do you think-
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
This is another bullet point, but do you think the high school graduation bump within four years is directly correlated to RISE? Or, you know, the 5.6% increase in students who graduate high school in four years?
I'll do that. You want to mention it down here? Okay. I think it's a combination of many things. A push on attendance, a push on us reaching out in the social sector. I think it's a push on our disciplinary alternative education programs that we have. I think it's a push on our leadership at our campuses. We have changed in leadership at both of our high school campuses. I think you can talk about RISE and how we redesigned that, because you went to RISE as graduation last year for the first time. You graduated '60?
'66.
'66? Those were 66 kids at risk of not graduating. You don't think that all of them would not have graduated if not for RISE, but I bet it'd been a large chunk. And I also think the IGC, is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah. Individual graduation committees, to where, you know, Kell Seldinger, Senator Seldinger, that's his, that's his bill, he's got it up again for this session, hoping to get that sunset out there to make it permanent law, that says that the high-stakes testing is not the be-all, end-all. You can actually not be successful on one or maybe two, and still go in front of a committee, complete a project, and be graduated under the laws and the policies of Donald Toler Rice, the state of Texas. So, I think all of those things, Mr. Washman, are what have really allowed us to increase our graduation rates without sacrificing integrity and rigor and curriculum. Because they all still have to go through the same courses and everything, and they may just have lacked one of those individual course exams. Typically, our, the ones we both struggle with are the-
English twos.
English twos.
English twos.
Mostly the English twos. Everything else is usually taken care of. For some reason, the English twos, is that British lit? What year is that?
Yeah, it's world, it's world lit.
Yeah, it's world lit. So, anyways, it's just, it's one of those deals we've got to get better at, but at the same time, state provided this opportunity to be successful. I think we're doing a good job of it.
The other thing is, is the high school plan has changed to the endorsement, so kids get to have more choice related to how they're going to get an industry certification or whether they're going to go, you know, whatever their route is. And I think that helps some, so that they can be able to sort of pique the interest of kids that maybe aren't in athletics or maybe didn't have that sense of belonging in band or athletics or whatever, where they'll kind of keep them engaged a little more through that CTC that you guys have done such a good job supporting.
The diversity and the menu that y'all have allowed us to develop over time, I mean, it didn't start with this administration, it started, geez, back in 2011, I think. We've evolved, and I think we're, our behavior, both as an organization and the adults in our organization are, that we don't have to just force a kid to go to the 1 through 8 periods in the pep rally to do that. Y'all hear me, use that all the time. Although, we like those pep rallies. I do. I was a comprehensive-type kid. There's, isn't that 5% right there? Dr. Hanson's correct. There are some opportunities there to reach kids that may not have been as engaged or inspired to complete their high school path.
They're at the best-
You ask the answer, yes or no, Anna?
Yeah.
Question? Well, yes.
Yes, and?
I mean, they're at the Tyler Rice, the best one right now, working on our best system. It's just cool. It's cool.
Dr. Hanson, I have a, I want to go back to the, next to the last thing.
Okay.
I always have drawn to the support on social studies, because social studies and English were my two things. And specifically, I taught eighth-grade social studies for 15 years, I'd say. What are your thoughts about the scores, the eighth-grade social study scores? Because it says especially the eighth-grade social study scores are going to increase.
Eighth-grade social studies is, it's just really a hard one. And in some ways, the accountability movement has forced us into this situation. So, the eighth-grade social studies test is US history, and US history is taught starting in kindergarten. So, the majority of the eighth-grade social studies test really doesn't test eighth-grade standards at all. It tests standards much, much earlier. And it all ties into that early literacy that we've been talking about. So, if we've been struggling to teach kids to read early on, then it's very difficult for a kindergarten, first-grade teacher who has a student who's already way behind to spend a lot of time teaching about neighborhoods and those kinds of things. They teach all of the things about patriotism and citizenship. Our teachers do a great job.
Civics.
Yes, civics. But whether they're teaching the eighth-grade social, the things that are going to lead to the eighth-grade social study standards, that's hard. So, what we've done in the new curriculum is we've tied that into the ELAR curriculum. So, it is an integrated approach. At this point, you won't see that in the eighth-grade scores for a little bit, but they certainly, we've certainly addressed it in our K through seven, or K through five curriculum. And then in sixth and seventh grade, we've also addressed introducing some of those standards or reinforcing those standards, because sixth grade is World Studies and seventh grade is Texas History. So, in some ways, they sort of take a break from US history for two years, and that doesn't work either, as we know for middle schoolers, they sometimes can't remember what they had for lunch. So, we have to make sure that we're reinforcing those eighth-grade standards or what they learned in K through five, all the way through sixth-grade social studies, and all the way through seventh grade. So, we do some spiraling during that. You may see the benefits of that pretty soon, but that K through five curriculum integration, you may not see the benefits of that quite as early.
And I'll say this, Doc, I'm a former history teacher, too, and how in the world can we be struggling in eighth-grade social studies when the superintendent's a history It's a different, it's a different world of curriculum and assessment than what you and I probably experienced as educators. Liked it or not, I'm a, politics has infiltrated our curriculum. And I'm not saying it's under, for Tyler Rice, because we can control that, but what is assessed, it's a little different, and they're attacking it a different way. It is not, who are the founding fathers? I know people hate that, that's not a big deal. I do, too, but I'm, it's not the old-school history of America that we all were raised in. There's not a lot of facts and years-
Process skills, all process skills.
It is a lot of, how did the process happen to get to that point, as opposed to how we used to teach it? So, a lot of things you and I probably studied in college to become a history teacher are now what's being intertwined, I think, in the middle school curriculum. I think it's, if you look at all of our curriculum, a lot of the rigor and the challenges have been enhanced, for what we were getting in high school and college, and now we're getting it a lot earlier now. So, it's pretty, I think it happens all the time. I think even our parents, that when they went through school, probably weren't as challenged as we were. So, not making an excuse here, because we've got to figure out a way to win. That's kind of our mantra, that's our theme for next year, rather than what I'm saying, find a way to win. I think that that's something that really needs to be taken a look at in eighth grade. And that includes, do we still do Texas history in seventh grade? And how we do it? Do we still do the sixth-grade, we call it World Studies, but it's world geography? And, I mean, you know, mapping contour lines and all that kind of stuff, we spend, we're spending all our time doing that, we're hurting ourselves if we're teaching the old-school sixth-grade geography, yeah, doing colored maps, I mean, finger turkeys and all those other things that we don't talk about. So, we're taking a look at it, and I hope we can have better results here.
They're also streamlining the DCE, so the state knows that the TED, that eighth-grade test is unreasonable for a 12, 13-year-old to take. I mean, it talks about original sources and how do kids go back and do all these research skills, some things that are loosely related to social studies, but really don't talk about our constitution and all of the things that we value here in Tyler that we spend a lot of time on. So, the, so that makes it, they're going to, they are streamlining those, and we feel more positive about what they're calling the streamlined standards.
Well, one of the things that I always, usually get to me, and I don't know if it's as predominant as it was way back, is a lot of the times, the social studies class were taught by the coach who then had a class that he actually taught, and they would read the chapter and answer the questions at the end of the chapter. And that's one of the things I didn't do. We, I always tell people, they didn't like history, they didn't have a good history teacher. So, I'm hoping that they do, do what you're saying, the research and the really getting into history and realizing that it's just a continual story, it's not something you just learn about that happened in the past.
Coaches are still certified, or people that coach are still more probably, more predominantly certified in social studies and PE than math or science. We also don't want them in math or science sometimes because of what you described.
And they're gone sometimes.
And they're gone sometimes. But at the same time, I think, you know, observing schools, we deploy our school improvement officers, Mr. Sanchez, Jones, Dr. Hanson, myself, our principals are really getting good supervision and instruction. There might be still some of that, but I don't think it's as prevalent as when you and I were going through the profession as a teacher. I think that we've got some pretty, first of all, we've hired well, and I think we do a good job of supervising, holding them accountable if they're not doing what we want them to do, they're very long, they're employed by Tyler Rice. So, yes, that, it is more likely that a coach, a signed coach will be a teacher of social studies, but I think we're a little bit better. They, PLC, for one, that positive pressure that you stress, not distress, but that you stress, that positive stress can be applied to those PLCs, and watch out, get those.
Our high schools and our middle schools make their, and the elementarys as well, they make their data public. So, regardless of what you're teaching, what you're doing on the side, your data's going to be public, and you know, any, any good educator, you know, any human doesn't want to be that individual that their score is L-los. And so, that's helped immensely as well, is we make our data public. I mean, it is what it is, and you either get bitter or get better. And so, we move on from that. Get bitter or get better. Any other questions? Just my, on the brothership tape report.
That's exactly 20 points. Slow it.
Just one quick thing, so I was looking at bilingual ed and EESL. Is there anything we can do to communicate this, these numbers on dual-language versus bilingual ed or EESL? You know what I mean? Those are so positive, dual-language, and I know we're expanding it, but is there anything we can do to get parents to understand?
The difference between the performance data-
Yeah, just the language is so much better for the kids and-
Well, the language and EESL, they're entirely two different things.
Right.
ESL is about kids who can't speak the language, and it's about strategies and not so much the language. And I think that's where people get confused, is when we were at Hillcrest, people say, well, we have to get a Somali a teacher. Well, no, we have to get a teacher that can, that has the strategies to teach kids of ESL. But dual-language is where we speak different languages, we're learning Spanish-
Right.
Even though we're an English speaker, or we're learning Chinese, where we're more of an English speaker. So, they're two different strands.
I think you understand, I think, I think what he's asking is, is how can we communicate outwardly, instead of grouping everything into the bilingual performance? Okay, which is that.
Right.
How do we communicate locally? We know what the state's tape report is going to be, there might be some dual-language component in there. I might have to go back and look at it, but how do we, how do we provide, maybe locally, the success of the dual-language programs versus the traditional-
Because this has everything broken out, right? It has bilingual ed, bilingual early exit, bilingual dual-language, one-way.
Right.
It has all of them.
Yes.
You're looking at the full tape.
The full tape.
The full tape report distinguishes between what specific type of-
But there's also a, you know, one, like total, total. Well, it's clear that that's where it needs to be.
Yes, that dual-language.
Yeah.
Versus the regular, the early exit model that we have in our other schools.
Yeah, and I'll, I think the data does look good, but I will say that we've got to find the effective staff to be able to do that, and that's probably, that guy right there, the guy's been trying to find, went to Puerto Rico last week?
Yes.
That's correct. Maybe have another trip to Spain. We've been finding success.
Did you see a bunch of congressmen down there?
So, you're right, I mean, I think that there's some value in publicizing that. I'm going to caution the board in saying that we would be able to pull that off and replicate that everywhere, because we've got to find-
Right, right.
The right principal, the right, the right teacher.
But if a parent says, I want my kids to be in the language-
Yes.
Yes, we want that.
Yes, absolutely.
In the district, if they're willing to do transportation.
Right.
And that's the hurdle a lot of times, is transportation. Now, we've seen at Caldwell this year that as a result of, I think they only have one bus, but their attendance has increased, their mobility rate has decreased as a result of parents saying, that's the school I want to go to. So, whatever it takes for my kids to get there, I'm going to do it.
Right.
And so, they've demonstrated over there that it works. So, I think we can, we can model the same atmosphere of people at different schools, where the parents choose to go somewhere.
And that's good data on Caldwell, but you also got to understand, it's probably 20% less if you get on the MSA and you want the world-class, you're maybe 25. So, that mobility will get influenced by, will be impacted by the fewer amount of economically disadvantaged students that they have there. So, that less mobility is something to celebrate, but it's also influenced a little bit, I think.
Yeah, the level of parent engagement, that certain parents, for whatever reason, are going to get their kids where they need to be, those kids, since they have engaged parents, typically are going to perform a little bit better across the board. I think getting it to where we're exposing kids who may, maybe not have that, you know, but also would benefit, you know, in spite of maybe some, a little less engaged, you know, home atmosphere, you know, I think, I think that's where kind of the crux is there.
I don't know whether it's a future agenda item, or whether it's just pulling some information that you've been sending to the board. I know our dual-language program has expanded. I don't know the scale of that expansion, I don't know the number of schools, I don't know within the schools, how many classrooms with dual-language versus regular ed. And I don't know how the performance data, when everything was very well-specific, essentially you could look at performance data and know what it was. Now that we're on multiple campuses, if we have some more information, I think that's part of this issue of making people aware that this is available, would be us looking at the performance, understanding how the program has expanded. I know it's kind of a multi-year adoption thing, and so there's probably some schools that are considering it.
I bet we do this, we'll compile some information for you, some data, and send it out to the entire board via email, and then y'all can decide if you want a future agenda item, if you want a public discussion on that. And that might require us to need to get some financial data together and some HR data together of what we could pull off, and how, how quickly.
So, it is one of our choice programs.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get them the data that's been requested, and we'll email the entire board, and then we'll, we'll kind of, under their advisement, what the future holds as far as reporting out some- what the future holds as far as reporting out some other things. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions on taper? At this point, we'll open the meeting to public comment related to taper. Sure that anyone chooses who wants to comment. Looks like there are no public commenters, which moves us to the next item, which is governance discussion, which was previously closed, our governance review, where we would normally be scoring ourselves, I guess, right now. Is that correct?
Yes. So this would be your quarterly report for LSG? And those things that come at us, I can't believe it's another quarter since we did it last time. We kept this on the calendar of governance, the governance calendar, excuse me, and just an opportunity here to discuss some things amongst yourselves. This could be an opportunity or a placement for where you can do work on your board operating procedures. You can do that here as well. You could talk about some of the mechanics that we have in regard to preparation of board meetings here. Talk about CRSS or LSG or maybe talk about, maybe what our team of eight planning for the future should look like. Remember, we don't need team of eight opportunities until later on this year, October, November. You'll also have a legislative update. I talked to Curtis Caldwell yesterday and he'll be the guy that comes in and delivers that for us again, the same guy we've had for the last five years, I guess. And once the session's over with, we'll get that arranged for you as well. There, there will be an opportunity possibly for a post legislative session at UT Tyler in June. However, I, I would probably caution the board about going to that, get those hours that early after the legislative session because they'll, they'll have some legal cleanup that they need to do. Usually October or November is the time to do that, in my opinion.
Is that the TASSA event or?
No.
TASB or?
It's David Anthony and the East Texas, Dr. Hanson, what do they call themselves over there at UT Tyler? East Texas.
Center for Research.
Center for School Based Research. They've got a long title. David Anthony runs it, former Raise Your Hand Texas Executive Director, former superintendent of SCIFR ISD. They're going to put a conference on, an East Texas based conference for that. And they're also going to have a board component on that to where you can actually get your legal update that night if you choose to do it. This board may choose to go. You may, you may choose to wait for October. LSG or AJ Crable's office did reach out to me in a microphone call between me and Trevor Hager.
Oh, did you?
I haven't told you a lot yet. I got a district, it's a lot to drive. And so he kind of, I think he kind of wants a, the reasoning line, we kind of throw, we kind of pulled back a little bit on LSG stuff. And that's fine. We're not in jail or anything because we're not in jail. And I just, I think that he, he really thought a lot of y'all in what we've done.
We were still number two in the state.
From the same rankings from 2000, early 2017. So whenever we sent in our last piece of data, it went backwards, remember? We went from 73 to 70 because something quirky happened in there and he wants to go. He misses us. He misses having Tyler on the list. So we'll do that here recently. So that's just kind of governance update for everyone and we'll, we'll kind of keep this as a placeholder. What we'll do from here on out is if we don't need it, we won't have it. But we certainly, we had it on there this time and remind y'all that we had it on the governance calendar and that we do have an opportunity for y'all to, to insert something on the calendar review or a review or discussion amongst yourselves about governance.
Okay. We recently redid board operating procedures. Does anybody have issues they want to talk about, I think we should consider in terms of changing the way the board operates?
I'm going to talk in my head. I will say the policy review that was done by this school district back in June? There was some unclear and miscommunication from the TASB rep who provided y'all the training. We finally got that in front of y'all, November 13th, wrapped up and completed, right? To get back to TASB. That has still yet to be completed by TASB. That TASB rep has left. And so we'll be bringing that to y'all recently to formally adopt. So all the work that we did, those policies are still in place. And I, other than driving down to Austin, walking in there and making a big stink, I don't know what else we can do other than we've got a new rep. They're supposed to be wrapping it up for us and putting us on the priority list because I don't think we were, so.
So we made a first reading on any of those policy changes?
We had, we had, what we'd done is we'd done a first reading and then we had to authorize TASB to make these changes. But what we were doing with this big review is making sure our full policy manual was up to date. And so we are waiting on the full policy manual to be printed. And when that happens, what we have to do is basically say, okay, yes, these are the policies we've approved and we are basically repealing anything prior to that and this is what we're going with. And so that's the piece that we are waiting on. They are supposed to, I did talk to her, I did talk to one of the ladies at TASB yesterday. They're supposed to, the new consultant is supposed to call us tomorrow. So hopefully we can get them kind of prompted to get moved.
So what's supposed to happen is the big blue policy book?
The purple one.
Right. Put it on that table right there and y'all will just bless it.
Right.
So.
And then it will all go online.
And then it goes back into the cloud and you never see the blue book anymore?
I'm telling.
Well, and then it goes online. All of those policies will be put online for look up at any time.
We'll bring the whole blue bind as they used to put them in as nostalgia. But I want to tell you, it's frustrating enough and it's, you know, there's really another, another option. That's the sad thing about it. I think TASB offers some good services, but this has been unprofessional, to say, that's the best word I can use about it. But there's really no other option. I thought maybe CRSS had a product or someone else, but there is pretty much every, oh, 1,014 or 84, half of the districts we have this year used TASB. And I know it can be frustrating for y'all and I apologize for that, but we'll try to get that to y'all so that we can get in the cloud.
Okay, any other governance items to discuss? Okay, we have one, two, three, four action items to consider. Do any of these need to be pulled? I'm hearing any, Dr. Crawford, is there anything you want to discuss? Board members, if you have any questions? If not, I'll accept a motion for approval of these action items.
So move. Second. Good motion.
Okay, thank you. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. We now move to executive session.